Do we need to hold off on this?
Item B needs to be done first before item A is.
Okay, so you want.
This, this affects Mr. Snyder.
Yes. Okay, I'll send you in, send you in to this first. But later on. Well, let's go with the, hold on.
Yeah, let's, let's.
Let's do, let's go with the appointment of Alderman Ward number one, position two, James Snyder. We recommend that James be added to Mayflower City Council or the remaining town uh uh that would go through November the second, I believe. Uh, that what I suppose.
It actually goes through the thirty first.
That's right. But uh it's understood that this appointment is only for to serve out this extended period of time. Uh, anyone in this, this position, if he chooses so, he would have to run for the same position or if no one is opposing, then he would run unopposed. We want to just make sure that that, that's understood. Do I have a motion for approval?
I make a motion to uh approve James Snyder for position of Ward two.
How's it? Thank you. Ward, Ward, Ward one.
Position two.
Ward one, position two.
Yes, thank you. Barbara, will you call the roll and start it please?
Mark Kaitman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Jack Paul.
Yes.
Tom Martin.
Yes, thank you. Now.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Now, ordinance number twenty, twenty four oh six is relevant because now he's been approved as a city council member. He also is a contractor website. So this, so we had, that is allowed if it's approved by the special organization.
Yes, we're going to swear James and.
Do we want to go ahead and hit it?
Or the C then? Before we vote like the A? You have a full hand over it. And I was, I was wondering if we're gonna vote.
Yeah, so let's go ahead and go to the first up, the first C.
Yes, alright. Then, uh, under General, number six, appointment of Alderman uh for Ward thirty, position two, kind of layering heel. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Go here, second. Second, thank you. Barbara, will you keep calling the roll for this stuff, please?
So we can motion, they go Zach.
Yes.
Mark Kaitman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Jack Paul.
Yes.
Tom Martin.
Thank you. At this point, then. Official, I'm just wearing my record. Kind of heel and James would you give me the front, please? It's an honor for me to be swearing you both in, so if Mayflower is officially over the office, if you will, to do that for me. I state your name.
I agree.
You solemnly swear.
Sigh, I'm aware.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
The Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of office of Alderman.
The duties of office of Alderman.
Of which I am proud to him.
Which I am proud to.
There'll be a little chest also, thank you. Thank you, congratulations. But please join us in a uh quote. No, that's fine. That's okay. Now, will you?
Mr. Snyder, okay, yes, sir. So on ordinance twenty twenty four oh six is a transparency ordinance uh because now Mr. Snyder is a public official, we need to have this on the books for him to continue being contractor for the website development. His other goal is to be. So a motion in second to put it on for first reading by title.
Okay, so again, we made the motion for. Let's see, for ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh six.
But I'll make the first reading by title.
I'll make the motion in one minute. This is kind of rule, please, the second, third reading, uh, ordinance twenty twenty four oh six, reading by ordinance. By title only and vote on ordinance after its initial reading.
On second. Thank you. Second, I said. Alright, Barbara, would you please please take the motion?
We have a motion in the second to suspend the rules, wait the second and third reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh six by title only and vote on ordinance after its initial reading.
Thank you. Would you please call the roll, um, but what is the?
Mark Kaitman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Jack Paul.
Yes.
Tom Martin.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Webster.
Larry Hill.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll put down the first read.
Yes.
Uh, ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh six and ordinance allowing certain city employees to conduct business within the city.
Thank you. Do I have a motion that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh six?
I'm looking at uh, uh, ordinance twenty twenty four oh six.
Thank you.
My second.
Second. Would you please restate the motion?
A motion in the second to adopt ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh six.
Thank you. Uh, have we, we've already gone through the motion, uh, made on second at the city council. Uh, is there any discussion? Barbara, I'm sorry.
I think we're, we're getting on this question.
Alright, Barbara, would you mind calling the roll for the board?
Mark Kaitman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Jack Paul.
Yes.
Tom Martin.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Webster.
Larry Hill.
Yes. Thank you.
Break this off.
In that move that we accept the emergency clause, uh, ordinance twenty twenty four oh six.
I'll have a second. Is that a second? Barbara, would you please state your.
We have, we have a motion in the second to adopt emergency clause of ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh six.
Thank you. Any discussion? Barbara, would you please call the roll?
Mark Kaitman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Jack Paul.
Yes.
Tom Martin.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Webster.
Larry Hill.
Yes.
Good, thank you. Alright, uh, under General, taking care of, again, I'd like to welcome James and Paul. Thank you for your service. Uh, we look forward to working with you. Thank you. Okay, the next on our agenda is the ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero seven, selling and purchasing of a, of a fire truck. Chief Oliver, you.
This is for the selling of the eighty seven F three fifty and uh the nineteen ninety six F eight hundred. I've got a meeting with them Thursday morning to receive our money or on Saturday.
Ask the question, are these the same numbers that we talked about previous meeting? Like I, in my mind, I was thinking twenty and ten with the third one total. Okay, got you. So it's thirty and ten, then forty total.
Yep. We plan to not say any, and just starting ordering. Our.
We're made in eleven thousand, right? With that expansion. And.
We're gonna make one of the third that one.
Pick up the check. Alright, with the, you've already received the, the first trucks that we purchased out of.
And we got the F eight hundred, it's uh sitting ready to go, simply have money at hand, looks like a motion to that one.
Okay. So of those deals, are things worked out? Alright.
So let's see, if I may have a question, number four, myself, did I have a selling ninety six F eight hundred, fifty for thirty thousand? Uh, the eighty seven F three fifty for ten thousand, so we could see forty thousand.
So Shannon Hills wanted to purchase the eighty seven that we have for ten. So they dropped the price of the rescue down to ninety. For that ten thousand, they took all of what they asked in price. So dropped it down to ninety.
So section two where it talks about purchasing that maybe compared to forty thousand, that's incorrect?
Uh.
Twenty nine thousand.
Twenty nine.
Can we just edit that number and really vote on this?
Yeah, it was twenty one. So the forty on section two, amount of forty thousand, twenty nine.
Yes. I might, I might as well, that's as far as I can, it's two section twos, is that correct? Or is that a typo as well? Okay, I just.
Thank you.
Because what if you said section two, like, oh, I see that. We have a provision of section two.
I'll take those for those right now.
Yeah, that should be section three where we made the change from forty thousand to twenty nine thousand. And then everything subsequent to that should.
So when you go to ordinance two, you're on this?
Yes.
When you talk about all the way, uh, I'm gonna do a suspend the rules, wait the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh seven, uh, we, it, ordinance by title only and vote on ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh seven after its initial reading.
On second. Would you please restate the motion?
We have a motion in the second to suspend the rules, wait the second and third reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh seven by title only and vote on ordinance twenty twenty four oh seven after its initial reading.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mark Kaitman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Jack Paul.
Yes.
Tom Martin.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Yes.
Larry Hill.
Yes.
Second. Please review the ordinance.
Ordinance twenty twenty four dash seven, ordinance approving the sale and exchange of fire department vehicles with other municipal fire department vehicles.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Second. I'd like to motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh seven.
I have, I have correct. Got you.
Thank you. Please restate the motion.
We have a motion in the second to adopt ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh seven.
Any discussion? Thank you, please call the roll.
Mark Kaitman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Jack Paul.
Yes.
Tom Martin.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Yes.
Larry Hill.
Yes.
Thank you. Should we move it and do the second?
I hope that we accept the emergency clause of ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh seven.
Thank you. Go to your second, second, thank you, Tom. Please reset the motion.
We have a motion in the second to adopt emergency clause of ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh seven.
Thank you. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mark Kaitman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Jack Paul.
Yes.
Tom Martin.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Yes.
Larry Hill.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance number twenty twenty four dash oh seven has been successfully adopted. Now we move into or uh, under General on our agenda D, ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero eight, commercial burn permit. Do you have chief, would you like to do this?
Uh, with all the new development, we act young. We're just trying to keep the control on open burning on the commercial development. I'm not worried about residential top part. Especially with some of the workers along the interstate. Smoke loads, defeats traffic on the interstate, we have, we have to monitor that. So the permit that we're trying to do is open bar permit or commercial bar permit, just it's a thirty day permit, uh, so we can regulate commercial burn throughout the city. We're just trying to get ahead of the, ahead of the ball game. And it's got, uh, in the ordinance, it's got subsections in there where it says, you know, I have to notify the neighbors, if they're in subdivision, they have to notify the neighbors that they're gonna be burning and we have to have proof of that, uh, proof that we don't have fires fresh in, fire line, somebody constantly monitoring. It's just trying to cover all the places for the open burning of the commercial property. And trying to get some knowledge to some of the developers that don't know the fire code.
That's pretty much your line, man?
Yes.
Of this, of this. Could be my question. Because just the first glance, as it is now, where we have free burning in Bay Flowers Alens, it's not a burning thing. Are these means of one of the other municipalities and other cities in our area?
Yeah, so this one, we kind of hold from Alexander, uh, we hold this one up, some of it, uh, a lot of, and I believe I would think it's two hundred and fifty dollars. Some of your other cities are actually higher. Uh, it's kind of falls in, in line for a thirty day permit. A lot of them do not allow burning at times. If they're burning for a while, they can go there, put it out, come back, we just don't have to have a fire, uh, or the water, did it? Uh, just trying to regulate our commercial burning, open and land where you got.
So we're not saying that the fire hasn't figured out by the time nightfall.
No, no, you just, yeah, that's, that's gotta be monitored.
So, and I've got some other questions about this and like behind, trying to dig a whole two D, that's what I do a lot of times. I've noticed like the highway park, when they're putting their ride lanes, a lot of times they'll burn cars on the same freeway. Would or not be required to get a permit from us as long as they're burning within our city limits?
I don't know, because that's in the road of that, I'm not sure.
But I mean, my question is, would we say that's if the roadway of someone owns property, that's essentially their right of way? That's why I'm just questioning the.
Big, big commercial park, it's commercial. We're not gonna go regulate, you wanna go by the fire, burn at the time, we're not gonna regulate that.
True.
But it's just, it's just commercial.
I guess I'm just questioning the limitations of this and.
I bet you say I would. I, I, I was just, it was just getting to me with.
Yeah.
I, I, I use more stuff on it, it's actually, it's a point.
I guess my question is, should we just table this for further discussions? It's kind of a first read for all of us on it?
We can. Whatever.
Whatever you want to do. I made the motion to table this.
Okay.
We're just before having several large burns here in the main line. We're in the next.
We've got six large piles, uh, so.
But at this point, they can do it. Then by a permit, or we have, I don't know, I, I, I just, I don't know.
So if we don't adopt this today, there's nothing to stop it.
No.
Big.
So I want to let them go with any of these properties, crossing it, I don't know. As long as I, like, we're gonna go out there, it's not hard.
But by adopting, they, then they have, then they're required to go by the standards and hardly out in the woods.
And then, I'm more than happy to stable it to our workshop, that way the fire marshal can meet you and.
That's my, I'm not against it, I just don't know anything about it.
No, I suppose.
Personally, I don't like to vote on things that I don't have anything about.
I'm one hundred percent for we can have it for the next workshop.
My motion is there, so.
Can we make a motion?
Yeah.
So.
Do I hear a motion?
I have a motion.
We have this, yeah, we have a motion on the table. To table. We have a second. With Mark. Okay? So, all in favor?
To table?
To table, with I.
Alright.
All of those? Alright. This resolution, uh, or ordinance, we'll be table until our workshop and then we'll decide how we go forward.
Where should we make, can we table the fire department on day real quick?
Yes.
Uh, we did ninety three calls for service in April. So far this month in May, we did ninety four. Our total as of today is four hundred and sixty nine calls for service. Uh, we now have twenty four active long years on the fire department. Our number is quite a way to go, which is good. Uh, we have our ISO evaluation last week, last Monday, and we'll know our.
Explain for those that may not understand the ISO, the importance of that.
So our insurance, fire rate, work rate on, depends on how much you're insured, how it will reflect on that.
What has been our?
We're currently class five.
Class five?
If you're moved by all the fire stations, class five, you're outside your, like, all the tests. Uh, but if you, like, we've got, the requirements, we've got the grade of the road, so they have got our five that is getting over outside five. It's just, uh, or grades.
This is an annual.
There are maybe five, seven years when we started. And so, uh, we're looking at get heard.
Any problems?
You anticipate it to be long? I got a lot of new requirements, so we'll see in six months, I hope. But with us being all the water, by our district, it hurts, so.
Explain that, um.
Uh, we don't have enough hydrants within our district, we have to have all the water. So we have to have tank and trucks. Uh, that's one of our biggest pictures is not having a hydrant within our district.
But the, a lot of our, now, we're not talking about the city limits, we're talking about the entire. There's two different situations here. One, for one, we have, uh, uh, then the city limits of Mayflower, we have hydrants. Once we go out into the fire district, which we cover approximately fifty square miles, correct?
Cleveland City.
In Cleveland, in Cleveland City. Um, this is what our fire department is responsible for and we, this is why he's talking about all these calls that are made. They are, uh, they, they do a absolutely fantastic job. But, um, with fire hydrants, you have to have a minimum of four inch maintenance, is that correct?
Don't keep me getting distorted.
That's correct, did you write? For the vast majority of our area outside the city limits is only in two inch, correct?
A lot of the smaller areas, we do have spacing areas that are length of like, uh, four inches and in larger, you know, we can get into, back into smaller, um, rural developments, you know, and then you're to the sideline for about two inches. But, you know, if you give a fire hydrant, the thing, the thing that's in that little area, you know, you have, you have, right now, a fire hydrant, they still have five hundred, it, for a payment like a thousand dollars.
Until it's stopped, a fire hydrant is eleven thousand.
They're outrageous.
That's how much they cost.
It, the cost, it may be stolen.
Yes.
But we're a hall of water district, we're a area on hall of water, just because of how large it is. But that's what we, that's what we got with it, but hopefully we'll lower it, help to satisfy.
Thank you for all you do and your whole team. We really appreciate you guys. Okay, uh, before that, we have the commercial ban permit that we table. Then next is under General, uh, resolution twenty twenty four dash zero seven, moratorium site approvals.
This, this was that resolution that we talked about at the workshop.
That's right. Uh, let me get some background information. What, what we're talking about is that, just as I mentioned a month ago, we're, we're looking at within the next month, uh, an awful lot of large commercial farms where land has been cleared, there are, there's going to be a business built there with just the four, seeing that, uh, uh, and, and other locations. Uh, so this is something that, that we've never experienced before. Uh, so with, that considered me, that we need to again, get ahead of the curve to, to get some kind of commercial burn ban in place, or not burn ban, but a commercial permit in place. And the same way, we are now facing something that Mayflower has never faced before and that we have opportunities that our businesses are coming in here. Uh, we, we have, for instance, uh, where, uh, between a metal roofing supply and the, what I call the water welcome, Mayflower sign, that property, uh, uh, first part of the property has already been closed, the second part will be closed this week. Uh, so June, June the first, that property will, will be purchased and owned by a group called Family Market. There, that's the place that wanted to be built in, there'd be a store, a fast food restaurant and a field station. That's just up the road. You've got a lot of vegetation to start to clear, so it's gonna have a major burn there. Uh, but my point is, we're, we're not talking about burns now, we're talking about actually coming in and, and working, uh, building facilities. We've got, uh, another two, a truck stop on the east side, we've got another, um, group that's coming in on the east side, and then there's potential businesses that I can't talk about. But the point is, we have never had to deal with, or other, the, the, the city here has never had to deal with s- something like this. Uh, we're not waiting for this in terms of, of zone. Uh, there are some things we have got to work out, case in point, the signs, uh, that the way things work now, anybody can put up a sign that, any size they want, uh, we don't want that. That's only one small picture of that. So with this moratorium, this is saying, any company that comes in business, that comes into here right now, that wants to build based on the existing zone, we're not doing that. We're not prohibiting anybody coming in here, we're just putting things on pause. And so the other companies that are, come before the plan commission and the city council, this doesn't affect them other than, uh, if their site plan has been approved, then everything's fine, except signs. We are going to work out what is going to be acceptable to we as a city, Mayflower for signs. Uh, there's companies that are wanting, already come in, but sixty foot signs, twenty four feet wide by, by fifteen feet in depth, have all electronics on them, uh, right beside other signs, uh, that's what I'm referring to as a paint cushion. We're not going to allow that. We're, we're going to take a step, uh, they can continue to do the building and then we're going to work with everyone and finalize our plan for what is going to be acceptable for Mayflower in terms of signs. We don't, we, we want people to advertise, but just in other areas where you go to Sam's, let's say, you've got multiple, uh, retail there, everybody doesn't have a, a fifty foot sign. It goes, if you will notice, you'll have one big sign and a lot of times they have various sizes of the name of the regional store on that sign. That's what we're going to be going to, uh, when it's an individual store, but we're going to be talking about, but that's what we're going to be talking.
The mayor, I mean, uh, I actually spoke to one of that groups.
Yes.
Um, that were playing this past week, basically.
On the zone, yes.
Yes, uh, when, because we would speak, talk about it, there were the two of us on the council whenever we first, they could be, you know.
Yes.
I think we all need to put a set of odds on that and compare to others that she was supposed to be acquiring, copies of their put together packet for us to review and see if that's right for us, or may change, so that may be a workshop item.
And, and that's what we're planning. Uh, roughly a year and a half ago, Dustin and I, we would have planned for the plan commission, but instead of starting at six o'clock, we started five. We would take every, uh. We would take every, uh, predetermined, before that meeting, we would take each ordinance by subject matter, let's say, every ordinance, we have on the book that had signs associated with, we would look at that, say, is this what we want? Is this what we need to keep? Then compare it with metro plans, you know, that, that are unified ordinance, and see which one made most sense. Eliminate one of the two, and then we document that for our ordinance. Street department, like, we're going to be doing this both at the plan commission and our city workshops in order to expedite us getting this up and running. We're, we're behind the eight ball on this, and we don't want to, um, as everybody knows, knows, I'm very pro-business. We don't want to, to cause anybody not to have to come to Mayflower. And so we're going to be expediting this, but we're gonna do what makes sense too, that we all can live with. So that's the background behind it. We're wanting to pause anything that comes up that we might get, uh, have an issue with, like we already gave them the books, so I follow the government books, so you can't stop that kind of thing. So I talked with Dustin, and he feel like this is the best route to go for right now.
I'll make a motion to not accept resolution twenty-two forty dash seven.
Thank you, do I hear a second? Thank you. Do we, uh, for all you just.
It just needs to be read, and it is, it will, the caption under it, it says, it's a one-hundred-and-twenty-day moratorium.
Okay. Would you?
Yeah, so, check out that. Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash oh seven, resolution suspending new commercial construction by plan approvals within the heart of Mayflower zoning district for one-hundred-and-twenty days effective from today. Uh, it's effective today, May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, this is, this is as of the workshop.
Okay.
Just a question for say, do, anything that's been approved is?
Then are they approved, is that a, is that a? I think you checked something. That was the day of the workshop.
Okay.
May twenty-nine. Well, another question, just to be clear, as to what's approved, uh, Mr. Schneider, maybe you have thoughts inside to this. Has the board commission already approved the site content thing for the family market development? There's things that are ninety miles, how long ago, I didn't want to pump the brakes on.
That's why I was trying to say, well, you know, those that have come before the plan commission and approved the site plan and that type of thing. Uh, that is, it, it has nothing to do with this. The only thing that, it, it has to do with those that did the customer, or those that did the rebuild, um, you know, against, will be the signs. The signs are a place on hold that they can put up, that we would approve until we did, uh.
We all determine. Clear me off, what?
What's that, um, what's going to be our options or your options in terms of that? And I've already talked to Family, uh, Market, and they said that's fantastic, too, they're all over the country, and the signs are a big deal. So they're, they're going to work with this, not above, not above. All right, so we have a motion, um, on resolution, and a second on resolution twenty-two forty dash seven, moratorium with site approvals. But, um, we have a voice vote, uh, all in favor, can give by saying aye.
Aye.
All in close, the same. Thank you. Now we move on to resolution twenty-two forty dash oh eight, purchasing new excavator for the water department. Raymond, you want to give us another? Motion.
Okay, um, I've gotten four days. Um, one day for the machine. Um, got one from JCP. It was, um, it was out trading, it was a hundred and three thousand, low for a hundred and three thousand. So it had a by-year extended, one year, three thousand dollars. I've, I've got one on a Dalsen, uh, recent, this is already as a man of that. Um, that was ninety, ninety-seven thousand dollar machine, that by-year we were working. Um, we, we threw it out, uh, for a minute. Um, pretty much the same machine that we have. Couldn't be jacked up, it was mostly red light, um, not too creative with that machine. We didn't have a red rental, it's okay, it's a little small machine. I've, I bought that machine, um, electric, they have brought two, we had our machines in the center that JCP could have prepared on. And then he can give us a, a machine that was adequate to what we, uh, what we had purchased from him. Close to the mountain, uh, then that machine was a Kubota, um, ninety-seven thousand dollar machine there. Uh, they had offers twenty-three, five for our machine, running down to fifty-five hundred dollars, low to fifty-five thousand there. The bill now, on the, uh, was pretty close, but they only had a two-year warranty. No, no, uh, so, uh, and that's the extended one, we had to purchase that one. And, um, then I, I was asked to give a, a vehicle, a cab, um, and I went with the three-oh-five, which is really compatible with the machine we have, the ten-point product, being that, um, we've been thinking to, um, upgrade it, like, get more machine, uh, extra lighting, caution light on top there. Um, on the chain down the bucket, it's high-grade, similar down there. There's, um, the blade, four-way blade, send this, send it up and down through the blade, which is awesome. Really a lot of that is here in the scene. Um, it's coming out, um, with no creating on this, uh, with our machine, middle of ninety-four thousand. And that's, uh, ninety-four, six, forty-four, eight, two. And that is a machine that I, I prefer to go with. Over the years, with this truck sale, I had DC for getting repair done on our machine. Um, in the, in the repair, there, there, there's a lot of that done. I'm not gonna, I'm, 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 I guarantee, I'm exactly still, if this, you know, getting repaired here, we get somebody else to, in, in a real time domain. Not only that, this is, we can monitor ourselves all in front of, you know, they can monitor the same time. Something happens on the same, and you know, exactly the same time.
Hey, the mayor was just asking the question, I was like, what's the warranty term on that?
Oh, it's, it's six-year, three thousand dollars.
Six years, so thirty thousand dollars.
How many hours can we get it on?
Well, the, the, the JCP that we had, we had for eleven years, you know, we had thirty-seven hours.
So it's gonna go one time before it goes an hour.
Right.
How many hours do you have? Why are you very, Raymond, is the cheapest price machine, the longest warranty?
The key to this machine, you know, I've got those, and then you have some like that, the key is both the hours and the, we live there. For six years.
Six years, like thousand dollars.
Six years. So you said they didn't make a trade-off on the machine that we have? What would you value that at as far as warranty for action?
I think I discussed this with my, my, and then I had, it's not a debate, it's, um, with the truck sale, um, machine that we've been, uh, that they've given us, that you can tell they, we made a decision, what's the direction, what to go, um, which end up being rented. So I've had a company, of America, willing to rent more, they say, don't get out of this thing, we're working, have a mechanic find out. Look at the existing machine that we have, they can see what repairs are gonna be on that, then we'll sketch that in the workshop, and then make a decision from there, if you want to make repairs, then over this time, we can sell it and ask it. And that's how many, that's what we're, that's what we're.
Is that machine, that machine's paid off, correct?
Yes.
We're keeping us back up.
Well, what we want to do is, we don't be thinking about that.
Sure.
Based on, uh, used excavators are going up and coming. Uh, we're gonna do the same thing with the street department, Jim's old, you know, he just bought it, and he went for it. And we've talked about the same thing, if we have both of them that we can take, uh, put on the auction at the same time, we're going to capitalize on our salvage. And if we get them in decent, or we can up our, our sales price. So I wanna maximize our, 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 our sales price, so that we can come back and hit our sales back, uh, for this.
Just have a question, I was.
He, he, he's the main machine, he's the top machine, you know, he, he's kind of, he's high level, he can't.
What, what is the rental cost per month, not now?
Nah, I think it's about, maybe thirty, thirteen hundred dollars a month.
A month or?
A month.
But that's because of what they've got already.
And I guess I have all the change.
Yes. So we would owe, owe them what, how many months?
Two, two, maybe three months, two and a half, three months.
Was probably diagnosed the cost on that old machine? Even if we don't have them fixing up through there, there's some costs associated with that.
And I, I, I had talked to Dale, uh, where we're gonna use the money from, uh, and, uh, we said we'd be best to use the dollar this month now, since that's our locker.
A thousand down, it's, it's one day.
And, uh, with that, the, the cell of that, that old machine, would, put that back in there? And we talked about, you know, looking at a, a lease program, and see what, a, a lease program, where the cost is, if we go back, would, would that be right?
And then talk about to pay ourselves back, is what you're talking about.
About, that, that.
That's, I agree, it's the way it translates on out, it doesn't make sense for us to be holding on to money and gaining what, on a crystal, three percent, maybe, I'm assuming, and paying seven, eight percent to buy that machine that we have.
But Ray's got the right idea, in terms of we purchase that.
True, I pay ourselves back by luck.
We look, and we're going to also do the street department, many acts the same way, so that we have both of those, and we're gonna capitalize, trying to maximize our resale value. And thank you for what I wanted to make sure that I did. I want you to say again, how many years have you had, again, that you've got?
With the city?
Yeah, no, no, the, what, the old many eggs that, that you retired.
The many act, it could live in years.
Eleven years, so eleven years. That, it goes back to, uh, keeping it maintained, saying, why don't you, Jimmy, you did an excellent job on that. I just wanna thank you and the guys for taking care of it, and I know you're gonna take care of it.
And we need to, to have a machine that's keeping the same operator, you know, changing operator, you know, it's not to the. Hopefully we're gonna be able to keep our operator for, along with him.
Okay, thank you so much, Ryan.
You're welcome. I have a voice, though.
Thank you.
I don't know if that's gonna be. You just made a voice, right? I, I want the cat, right? Raymond, I want that. You, you do want the cat?
Oh.
Your, your cat, is what you're. So I, I'm like a cushion to accept resolution twenty-four forty dash oh eight. Yeah, maybe not really much.
I have a new somewhere, okay. Let's put this one on, resolution two thousand twenty-four national eight, a resolution authorizing purchase of Caterpillar three-oh-five, many extra. He says, we're gonna make our own work. Thank you. So make a motion, yes?
I'll say.
Thank you. Uh, would you have a voice, a, a roll up, please?
Mark Kigman?
Yes.
St. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Jake Paul?
Yes.
Cal Mart?
Yes.
James Snyder?
Yes.
Very good.
Yes.
Thank you, motion period, thank you. So you get to go pick your many eggs up in the morning.
No, we'll, we'll be, we'll be getting up in the morning, I'll be taking, hopefully maybe in March or the next day, check to.
Okay.
And I'll have to build that thing.
Okay, so they all waiting to.
I could put on his glasses.
Yeah, I think after, I thought we weren't gonna take it, we put all the.
I told him that night, when I went down there and looked at it, said, you must get this thing ready to go, buddy, 'cause it's, I'm coming out.
That's right, we're good, good. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, uh, let's see. Oh, the next thing we have on here, Jennifer, is our presentation of the plaque, great? Is that worn here? Yeah, that's, that's gonna make it fast. Okay, uh, Jennifer Lassit. Jennifer, oh, yeah, there it is. Do you want me to add to the front, please? That's fine. I wanna go to the microphone for, for the, yeah. I'm presenting Jennifer with this plaque of appreciation, and let me just read it for, what it says. I have appreciation for the, for the years of dedication and service to the May, Mayflower Safety Council, January twenty-nineteen through March twenty-fourth. Thank you so much. We appreciate. Barbara, if you had her name, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Jennifer. Again, thanks, Jennifer, for your service. Uh, so we have E.O. business. If not, we're moving into comments, uh, Ms. Mary Nash.
Thank you for allowing us to be here.
Thank you.
This is the fairer couple legal. Uh, she works for our law office. And apparently this is Kevin Connie, uh, this is Connie, our office manager, and a person, a person in our, um, name, her husband Paul. And, uh, we're not a couple here, fairer couple legal, and we're here tonight to ask you, to propose to you, okay, that you allow us, the law firm, to spearhead a drive to build a dog house here in Mayflower. You guys are going like crazy, and you're just doing great, and, uh, so are the dogs and cats who are coming here, uh, to visit you, uh, which, you know, have a home. And I want to just introduce two people that make all the dog leads around here work. And Lisa, would you, would you stand up so everybody can see you?
Yes.
And next to you, you can see.
There was our, our chick back there, who's, and let me just give you some numbers, keep on that. In two thousand twenty-two, there was two hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-six cats that came through the shelter. Twenty twenty-three, a hundred and ninety dogs and seventy cats are kittens who were rescued and adopted. These numbers include foster animals that did not be housed at our shelter, ninety percent of the dogs were adopted by our shelter partner in Connecticut, and they're mainly ten percent being adopted globally. And forty percent of those dogs go through vascular, heart, or premiss before being adopted. All animals are spayed or neutered before they're allowed to be adopted, we have a no show shelter here. What I'm asking you to allow the National Firm to do is carry out a drive to collect money and build a shelter here. Now, uh, the lease chiefs on the trail are laying, uh, that won't cost the city anything, uh, and the shelter is not gonna cost the city anything, and you have to provide electric to it, and present and water, that kind of thing. But we would like to be the driving force to bring here, and if you, well, I'm not talking about the Toshka Hall, I'm talking about another building that has a big door, the buttons, we can put trucks through, the, you know, truck haul stuff, uh, you know, maybe have some water, and wash dogs, bathrooms, so our people walking there don't have to leave the building, uh, that's kind of what we're thinking of that, so it's a proposal uh, to the city of Mayflower, you can make this gift, uh, of a building that will be, uh, a little bit nicer than what you got now, and have communities ready for, you know, you'll put your tent up on the outside to keep the weather out and all that kind of stuff. But we kind of got interested in this when we were looking down somewhere, that they were looking for dog house. But we kind of got interested in this when we were looking down somewhere, that they were looking for dog gats, you know, housing dogs outside. And Bear, uh, is two, almost two years old, and he's worked at our law firm since he was born, and we had thirteen-year dog that worked there for a long time. And you've seen our commercial, when we say, you know, Bear, I say, a dog, you know, and he uses a state plan, and a lot of these state planning we do for pet rats. You know, part of the family, uh, we plan for the kids and for the animals as well. And what we want to do here, if you allow us to do that, is to drive the money in here that will build a building that we can house animals in, uh, you know, we're not asking the city to participate in raising money, that's a good joke there, but, you know. Uh, what we're looking for is to, we want us to play the pack, and we would love to be able to do that. We have gone and looked at the building, and Momella, which is, he's got punished up, and it is a really big building, we don't need anything that people don't think. But we would like to have you, I will say, approve that it is okay, and the city would let us do that, uh, for the city of Mayflower. And have a nice shelter, so that when these dogs are coming through here, uh, you know, they're hits and pretty good here. They are part of our families, you know, that, our part of the is sort of sometimes more important, and that gives them as much trouble as the kids do. And so we would just like you to think about it, I've certainly talked to our wonderful lease chief, uh, about the things that he's got in mind, and, uh, and help fix it for three months. And let us, uh, do this for your sake.
Ms. Nash, uh, first of all, thank you so much for coming before us. Uh, I've worked with Chief and Lisa, uh, Jennifer, uh, that's, is now not on the council, has been working. Uh, a lot of people have, have wanted to do, and had lots of conversations about what you are trying to, to actually put in concrete. And we can't thank you enough, uh, we feel, um, first of all, we only have one Lisa, there's only one Lisa. And there's only one. And we thank God that we have her.
Oh, yes, we should.
She is, and she is known, uh, across the state, and we really do appreciate that. Um, I don't have to tell you that we would have already loved to have done something of this magnitude, but we just don't have the money. And so we really appreciate you, uh, you adopting us, so to speak, and helping us in any way. Uh, we would, we will do everything that we can to help ourselves in going through this process. But again, I don't think you're going to hear any opposition from anybody on this city council.
And we would like for the people to talk about it, for their planning and options, you know? And I, I really honestly think that, and Connie told me before, I'm gonna, I promise you, you can't do this. I told you she's a part of our opposition, she's online. But I think with enough businesses here to support it, I think with enough people, I'm thinking of mailing, you know, and, uh, we have a five-year C three charitable organization set up for this very purpose.
Yes.
Uh, and so we want to see, you know, people can contribute and, and do that. And we think, we think that there's enough people with the heart of hope to, to put this together. And we'd like to, you know, have you tell us that we're good, love it, and get it, and let's see what we do next, I, you know?
If we need to vote on this, uh, how does everybody on the council?
Maybe just want to think about it, you know?
I was gonna, I, I think there's a lot of things to discuss, I'm not even going to, I appreciate, uh, completely, what you're willing to do, what you're willing to do. I just wonder about not having the land acquired yet, that sort of thing going forward, dude.
She's well.
No, no, I, I just.
We've been.
Not trying to slow play it, but just taking baby steps at a time before we go to a, there's some discussion about what the city's responsibility is, with all budget, things of that nature.
Yeah, because what we're thinking is the city will have to supply electric, they're gonna have to pump water, uh, you know, that's kind of our thinking is.
Utilities and, and workforce, so basically what we're supplying today, what we're supplying today.
Ever since I've been on the city council, at budget meeting, kind of, that, that, that's, that's a discussion. And, uh, Ms. Mary, I've known you several years, thank you a lot of you, and I appreciate you volunteering and, and taking a little bit of warrants, and I, you've got my one hundred percent.
Well, Eric told me I should do it, so.
We can work out the details, I feel exactly, you can get about a point, I believe we can work out the details, but that's, that's gonna be, have to be something we have to look, look for and, and, uh, work all it out, but I think.
And we want to conclude, you know, your device and council and all of that, it's been so long, because, because, uh, this is the first time that we have, uh, spearheaded a drive, don't know.
Come up with a game, man.
And I appreciate you guys giving us time to talk to you about it, and.
Oh, absolutely, thank you so much.
I just want your support and approval, and to say, you know, we're going to do the right thing, we're, you know, we represent it, of course.
Of course, of course. We will work closely together.
We will.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
It's my pleasure.
Where, where are they on the nation, buddy?
We're gonna have to play it long.
Where's the plate?
Yes. Let, let Bear, let Bear walk around with a plate.
But I just feel that you might give us this opportunity, and we'll do everything we must to make the world.
Thank you.
And, uh, and if you're talking about, to give this along to your friends and neighbors and business people that you know, and, uh, give them to put it into the till, and make sure that we have the money, that we can, everything we can.
Yes, we will, we'll, we'll be, we'll be, we'll be talking closely.
And, and the doctor, I don't know, the doctor.
Yes, yeah, Lisa's, Lisa's good on that.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Ms. Nash, we really appreciate you. Thank you so much. All right, uh, next, on other comments, uh, Antonio. Antonio Jameson.
Hey, thanks, uh, thanks for inviting us out, as I said, seeing everyone, uh, I'm Antonio Jameson with Davidson, I have a success center. We are now a nonprofit, and we've been around since twenty seventeen, and last year, well, three weeks ago, our organization, uh, received an award from, uh, Arkansas Department of Health and the C D C, uh, I'm in the health work, I get the kids with disability across Arkansas. And, uh, for the last two years going into our third year, we, we have had a free after-school program here, that's the Department of Arkansas Department of Education. And I wanted to talk to the city council about, uh, about three weeks ago, we got approved that we have a community learning grant, the Twenty First Century Grant, which is a five-year grant. Uh, that's, uh, that we bring it to, uh, Mayflower, uh, I have a meeting, June tenth through the fourteenth, with, uh, with everyone, Twenty First Century, and. And we do, we just want to invite everyone out, today we started, um, uh, our organization's summer program, it's called Power, you know, Power to Overcome Learning Loss. We had sixteen kids showed up, uh, we have about thirty-two, thirty-three kids on the waitlist, and, uh, we have small staff, and we're right here located inside, uh, Mayflower Elementary Storm Shelter, and, uh, we just want to invite everyone out, you know, kids, uh, uh, hungry to learn, they, we went to the state cap today. Uh, they got a chance to go to the treasury, uh, office, and walk around, and bear education, we just want to tell you all when you're, and, uh, and then we, uh, so we had a third P U D day event here last year, we would like, I think we had, uh, over a hundred-some, uh, students, uh, from all over, and this year, we're gonna do it again on August twenty-fourth. Uh, John Cocteau, uh, inspirational speaker would be on hand, and, uh, we just want to sit in the note, and, and feel free to reach out to us, and, and let's help these kids, bring them out, and help bring, uh, help them roll, uh, I think, uh, so I have, like, we have, like, three kids coming from Long Island, every day to come to the after-school program. Uh, we have two kids from Conway, so the parents are open to come to, uh, you know, our school, so we, we just want to invite you all, I'm just helping speak to kids, we'll be back next Tuesday. Uh, uh, we have a wonderful teacher, a certified teacher, uh, Ms. Justice coming, you know, with kids this morning, uh, and, uh, every day we're gonna be on a unique experience, and we just want to invite you all out, okay?
Antonio, when, when does this start, has it already started?
Uh, we started today, the summer program, yes, sir, so.
And it's going to be held over at the elementary, uh, shelter?
Yes, sir.
Elementary school shelter?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and what are the hours?
Uh, hours, uh, seven-thirty to one-thirty.
Seven-thirty to one-thirty?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and so we, we are operating on a grant, uh, yes, a grant, yes, a funding right now, it's part of the American Rescue Plan. Uh, so we have had this, uh, funding for three years, and, and just, uh, our goal is to help kids with reading, math, and social emotional. And the data, the data is good, kids and families are, you know, uh.
What are the, what's the age group?
Uh, we're six to thirteen years.
Six to thirteen, okay.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and with the Twenty First Century Grant, we're gonna be, uh, uh, getting on reading, math, we're gonna start mentoring, uh, power, you know, positive opportunities, whatever the answer is, we're gonna be a redirection mentor group for a lot of young males, uh, we, we spoke with Chief, uh, Office, uh, talked to Farm County Sheriff's Department. So we're gonna try to get, uh, a lot of males around Mayflower, and, uh, we also talked to, uh, uh, Chief, uh, uh, Chief Staff, Leanne Brown, about this, uh, so we're gonna try to expand and, and help kids, you know, the Farm County, especially here in Mayflower, Arkansas, so we would like, I can send, uh, information to you all, so we, we really invested, and, uh, and, uh, we really want to help the kids, and we pacing, I go do, we do home visits with the kids, family out, today we had three parents to go with, you know, they were super excited. And just bringing some at Mayflower here, you know, since we don't have, uh, boys and girls, so, we, 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 uh, we, uh, last year, we, uh, uh, we, uh, last year, right up there, we created ten young authors, they books are on sale on Amazon, we want to hear about it in Mayflower, you know, those kids are very proud of it, and, uh, young lady, she gonna come back to my club, we gonna, we gonna have five more young authors within the next six months, right here in Mayflower.
But that was the group that was meeting in here?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that, yes.
As a show? Yes, sir.
Yes, that they all developed their, or, uh, wrote their own book.
Uh, she, uh, she, uh, she published it. And put it on, on, on.
Pretty special.
Yeah, very special to the kids, so we just want to go James out of town, success, and, uh, we, you know, we need you all, uh, help, and, and Twenty First Century, five years, hoping you might have the first year, a lot of doubt, and then the kids are learning, and, uh, and happy, that's all, so I thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I've got another question, a lot, for the community, who loves children, uh, he is a great advocate for these type of things, and if anyone has the time, that you go by again. When, is it through the entire week?
Uh, we're just through Tuesday, we have.
Oh, just, just, you want to say there about it, uh? Okay, all right, but, uh, thank you so much, Antonio, I, I wonder if we can have you again, just like, no, thank you.
Do you want to put some of that information on the website?
Yeah, I told Antonio to, to get that, well, this, uh, James was just saying, remember what we talked, you were gonna give me some information.
Yes, sir.
Uh, send that to me before I can forward that on to James, and we get that on our city website, and get that being, uh, looked at.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you, Antonio.
Thank you.
Okay, um, it takes us down to announcements, our next regular city council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June twenty-fifth at seven P M. Our, our next council workshop meeting is, uh, June the thirteenth, that's on a Thursday. The workshops begin at six P M, rather than the council meeting at seven. Then we have, uh, our next planning commission meeting is scheduled for May twenty-ninth, uh, that's tomorrow then, isn't it? Okay, uh, and, uh, tomorrow, it says five P M, but that's actually, that is correct? Okay, okay, um, our next planning commission meeting is tomorrow at five P M, Wednesday, here at this location, um, any other comments? If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
To adjourn, thank you.
Thank you.